All right, Jan is now here and she's on as a panelist.
Great.
Good.
Welcome, Jan.
That was way too difficult, I'm sorry.
Glad that you're here.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. I'll go ahead and call to order the Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting. This is occurring virtually on Zoom and also by phone. We'll go ahead and begin with the roll call. And so I'll go ahead since we not everybody can see who's speaking or who's present, I'll go ahead and just welcome everyone. So welcome Director Hoover. Welcome Director Bullerjack. Welcome Director Morris. Welcome Director Larson. And welcome to Samuel Fia Pito and also Harpne Kwar, our student representatives. We'll go ahead and move into the welcome message. And so last last meeting, we had a discussion and started practicing the courageous conversation norms that originally are from Dr. Singleton in out of the courageous conversations about race in education handbook and the importance of recognizing that in our in our leadership and education, the importance to practice as anti racist leaders, there's very important foundations to hold on to. And so staying engaged, meaning all types of engagement emotionally, intellectually, socially involved in dialogue, what is being said, what's not being said, experience discomfort, acknowledging that discomfort is inevitable, especially in difficult conversations and conversations around race and that we make a commitment to bring these issues into the open. We speak our truth to be open about thoughts and feelings, not just saying what others may want to hear and expect an exception on closure. This agreement asks us to recognize that we stay in uncertainty, that we cannot rush to quick solutions. Oftentimes, that's how harm is done. And especially in relationship to racial understanding, it's an ongoing dialogue. I also just want to reiterate and welcome our community who found it very important to take their time after a very long working day and doing all the service to our community to be here this evening. So just want to really honor you and appreciate you for showing up. It shows that what we have to do here is very important and that you really are interested and that you care. It's important to you too. So welcome, everybody. And I think Director Larson is going to do the land recognition.
Thank you. We in the Tuckahilla School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first peoples of Seattle, the Duamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, in honor with gratitude, the land itself and the Duamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
Now we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? All right. We'll go ahead and move along to the oath of office. Dr. Herndon will go ahead and take care of that.
Great, thank you very much. Again, want to reiterate the appreciation of all of those community members and staff who are present tonight and board directors for your continued support and leadership in the school district. Very excited to fill our second student representative position. And so we'll do that oath of office right now. So if Sam Fia Pito, I know he's present, I saw his response in the chat. So if he could unmute, I will go through and ask him to repeat the oath of office and I'll pause a little bit so that he can repeat that. Sam, are you ready?
Um, yeah, I'm ready.
Excellent, thank you. I Sam Fia Pito.
I Samuel Fia Pito.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Scale and ability.
Scale and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of Tuckahilla School District Student Representative.
Of Tuckahilla School District Student Representative.
To the Board of Directors.
To the Board of Directors.
In and for King County, Washington.
In and for King County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law and policy.
As such duties are prescribed by law and policy.
Congratulations, Sam. We're happy to welcome you on as our new student rep.
I'm excited to work with y'all.
If anyone has any welcome words for Sam, you'll please feel free to share.
Just welcome, congratulations. So glad that you're here and I really look forward to getting to know you more and working closely with you.
Thank you.
I agree, Sam. It's great to have you here. Took a long time to get you here. But you patiently waited through the process and the interview with you was great. So glad you're here.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Samuel, for waiting through all this stuff. It's we're obviously in a in a tricky time right now, but we really need your input and thoughts as yourself and representing your students. So really look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And I look forward to working with y'all as well. And I hope that I can make a change in my time as student representative.
And Mr. Fia Pito, I'm really looking forward to having a chance to get to work with you and get to learn with you and get to know you better. And also just want to acknowledge how important you are. And as a colleague on the board to, I mean, not only how important, how maybe more important you are in terms of your lived experience, your wisdom to fill us and what we need to know, what we're not aware of, what maybe if we're if we're not recognizing something. And so just want to honor you. Don't want to put you on the spot, but if you, you know, you are always welcome to share. Please don't wait until anyone asks you. Whenever there's discussion, please join in. We want to hear what you have to say. So welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sam.
We'll go ahead and move along to public comments.
Yes, we do have a public comment. This is from Erin Herta. She says, hello, I have families reaching out to me about when the district will make the call to go remote. Trust me, no one wants to go remote, but in one week COVID took over our school. As a teacher in the classroom, as of today, I have 26 students out, most left Thursday or Friday because of positive or exposures. Yet no one in the district or the school is communicating total numbers to us. I have heard we had 300 students out last week. An administrator told another teacher that we have reached 35%. On Friday, we had seven teachers out and at least three of them were confirmed COVID. This means more of us have to cover exposing us to more students. We have access to rapid tests, but they are not as valid as PCR tests. I had COVID over break, tested negative on the rapid test and positive on PCR. One student emailed me yesterday and said, so they told me I have to quarantine, but they didn't tell me how to keep doing school. Not every student going into quarantine is going to ask their teacher what they should be doing after they have already left. The imbalance there means that students are going to have bigger gaps because they are simply not going to know their expectations. Also, I'm wondering why the district hasn't sent out communication on the lingering effects of COVID to educators and administrators. It does not simply go away. There is fatigue and fogginess and muscle aches. This will impact the many students and staff coming back from having COVID. In my day, oh, I'm sorry, in my day to day work, it feels more like we are supposed to ignore the pandemic than find ways to help our students and families navigate this hard time. I don't need an hour long training on eye ready testing the first week back from break. I need to connect with my community so we can help each other figure out how to help our students who are anxious about the uptick in cases, about their nervousness, about what's to come. Yet I have not been given any tools or information to help them other than my natural instincts. Last year, we asked for weekly updates on COVID cases. At this point, I would be happy with any information. Teachers are feeling forgotten and abandoned. That doesn't feel like the district we should strive for. We have one of the most amazing communities around, but what are we doing to keep it together right now? I know that no one is actually ignoring the pandemic, but the lack of communication and more importantly, the lack of inequity from the district on how we are doing is very disheartening. We are five schools. Come talk to us. Come talk to the students. Find out what's really happening. Don't assume. Thank you for taking your time to read this, but I also hope to hear back from you all. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Herta. I have a feeling that many of our other attendees also have similar questions and interests. And so hoping that with our next as we move along, we have more information or more ideas on how to proceed. We'll go ahead and move along to the race and equity update, Dr. Herndon.
Yes, thank you. A few areas of follow up that we have for the race and equity piece. And then I'll also be giving some updates in the COVID myself in this Maestro, our district nurse on the COVID updates that hopefully will start to address some of the comments that we just heard. But let me start with the race and equity update. Before we left for break, we had, this is for the SRO process. We had two community, we had a community listening session and a staff listening session facilitated by University of Washington, which is doing a study on impact and alternatives to SROs. They were really impressed with the turnout of community and the fact that we had our family liaisons there to help with translation. That process is continuing. They have a little bit of a of a shift temporarily, just with the uptick in cases. So as a university, they've made some adjustments temporarily. We were planning on doing student sessions and we're going to try to do those in person. But we, I told them we would need to check in with them again next week because I want to make sure we have great opportunities for our students to get their feedback. So that's one piece that we have on that. We are having our first family night being led by our family liaisons. That's something that Tuckahilla School District used to do on a monthly basis. A couple of years ago, we we haven't had one during the pandemic. And even shortly before then, but we're really excited to be resuming that. Ms. Chen has been working diligently with the family liaison. So that first family night is Thursday, January 20th. And that's going to be a virtual meeting as soon as we can gather again in really large groups with our liaisons will make sure that we have those in person. They were in the past, really fantastic turnouts. They're just a great opportunity to review topics that are relevant to our students and families and really try and get a sense and understanding perspective to our families to understand some of the processes, ways in which we can support them better and ways in which they can ask questions about any policies or procedures we have or what's going on. So they're great events for those who have attended them in the past. I would highly recommend attending them again. They're they're really good opportunity. The third update is also somewhat related to one of our agenda items, and that's on mascot change for Thorndike Elementary. So just an update for that. Thorndike, their mascot is the Thunderbird, but that's related to Native American symbols or or people. And so we wanted to follow the process that the state has outlined around Native American mascots or imagery. And so we reached out to our local tribe, the Duamish, as well as the closest federally recognized tribe, which is the Muckleshoot. So we did get some feedback from the Duamish. The Muckleshoot have yet to respond, but even though they have not responded, our feedback was that we should find an alternative mascot. So we're going to go through that process at Thorndike, make sure we can identify an appropriate mascot that would comply both with the state directive as well as a change in our policy, which reflects that change in state policy. So we'll get a timeline associated with that. Ms. Thomas and the race and equity team at Thorndike has been doing a very good job and trying to adhere to the process that we have investigating how we can be in compliance. And I just want to really applaud the work that they've been doing. And I know they're going to do a great job and this gives an opportunity for students and families to give some input as well. So those are the updates that I had on the racing equity pieces. Any questions on that?
Dr. Herndon, I have a question. It's related to the aspect of collaboration and you know, looking at our partnerships or relationships with our tribal communities. And I'm a couple months ago, after the the first draft of the policy came through the board, that following that meeting was able to have a briefing with you, Jan, Director Bullerjack, and ask that, or actually, we had talked about, you know, communicating with the tribes. And in that meeting, I had recommended and asked that you reach out as the superintendent. It would be the most respectful and honorable thing to do to show how important our tribes are to us. And oftentimes, in terms of like tribal council and everything, it's really important. And I just, I was not sure if like, if you had done that, if you had spoke with anyone, because it's not just about following the policy. It also is written in there that part of the reason of those those connections were to actually collaborate and and ask for permission sort of protocol. And so I I just didn't know how much of that had happened before any changes happened at the school building.
Yeah, and so I was not able to personally connect with them. I did ask for the names of folks that had already been reached out to. I will connect with them currently, though, to let them know that the input that they gave was important and we're going to make this shift because I think that that's really important. Even though we didn't also hear back from the Muckleshoot, I really am wanting to honor the feedback that we did receive from the Duamish. So even though, you know, that's not the closest federally recognized tribe, I think it's still really important to honor that feedback that we received to them. So I'll be following up directly with their tribal council or later to let them know the direction that we're going to be taking.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I think it's important that it's an ongoing conversation and relationship building much needed. And so this is just an avenue, one avenue of that, but it shouldn't be the only or sort of now that, you know, tonight, if we vote the policy and we're done now. So that's, thank you for letting us know that you'll be following up and building a relationship. Appreciate it.
For sure.
I have a question and comment as well. I'm curious around like what the communication was kind of heading into the work once we knew that we needed either seek approval or change the, what kind of was the communication with school staff, with the community currently at Thorndike and then kind of piggybacking off of that. I think I wonder if it would be really valuable to send potentially a letter to the larger community, kind of explaining our decision and why we landed at the decision that we did. I think that could be really valuable as well coming, yeah, from you. Thanks so much.
Yeah, absolutely. We can make sure we have that communication going out and we'll communicate why, you know, kind of why we're at the policy where we are. I know for some, these mascots and symbols have a long history for some people quite painful and for others, not necessarily aware of that. So they in many cases appreciate the legacy of it, but don't always understand the impact of that legacy and the kind of harm that could have been going on along the way. So we'll make sure that we can communicate that out both to the Thorndike community and community at large.
Any other questions for Dr. Herndon? Then we can go ahead and move on to COVID update.
Great, thank you. Again, on this one, I will also see if our district lead nurse is here, Hannah Maestro, Ms. Maestro, to see if she can chime in. But I did want to comment on a couple of pieces. One is first, I want to start with a recognition of how impactful this latest variant Omicron has been to our community as we have known throughout the pandemic, COVID and its various variants impact people in different ways. So for some people, they're much more impacted by the illness. You know, the people have died from it. People have been hospitalized from it. Other people are asymptomatic, so they can get COVID, but they don't produce any symptoms. And because of that, it's it's really a challenge. What we've seen with this latest variant is that the transmissibility is very high. We continue to believe, I think we're in a different place than we were obviously a year ago with vaccines and a little bit more knowledge about the virus, but it's definitely impacting and cases are climbing for sure. Different parts of the state, different areas and within our communities. So I just want to acknowledge that we are definitely aware of what's happening and we do keep track of kind of what that impact means for us. I also want to really acknowledge and applaud all of the efforts that staff have done in order to continue to educate our students in person. We know what a year of being remote was extremely impactful, both for staff and for families and students. So we know the importance of what that in person learning means. We have this fall already done some remote work. We've had classrooms that have had to go into quarantine and some staff have taught remotely briefly. Some students have have also been able to log on remotely. It's mostly been at the classroom level. So we do have a process in place. I had a conversation today with Mr. Baker in our technology department. We obviously have technology available to help out in the event that we might have to do that. So we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. I also want to say that we're working on a communication to go out in the next day or two to talk about what we have been seeing, experiencing and what may be coming up. I've listened to two conferences, Zoom meetings with State Superintendent Reichdahl. One was on Friday. There was another one today. I also have a meeting with the area superintendents tomorrow and update with King County Department of Health to see what their guidance is. So, you know, there's kind of a lot coming our way, but I want to make sure that we have as much information out there so that people can understand what changes are happening in protocols, also what availability may be out there. But staff have been doing just a remarkable job. It's extremely taxing. I know it's it's draining, but they have such a commitment to students and supporting each other within buildings covering, as was mentioned during public comment, covering classes for each other, planning periods. Administrators are in classrooms covering buildings. Central office staff are out there helping to deliver items. If we have classified folks who haven't been able to deliver items, we're just trying to do everything that we can. So we are looking at starting weekly communications, as was mentioned. We have sent out something each week for the last two weeks, but they haven't been very specific. So we want to make sure that we are getting more information out there. When it comes to any shifts to remote or closures, either one of those could be possible. And the decisions based on that are around either a guidance from the Department of Health, just like previously. Although I will say that listening to the State Department of Health today, along with State Superintendent Reichdahl and listening to him, State Superintendent Reichdahl on Friday, he does not envision any sort of en masse shutdown being advocated by the Department of Health. So what he was stating today was basically, you know, in the event a classroom has the quarantine or a shift to remote or even a building, it would probably be pretty temporary in nature. There are certain requirements that if that were to happen, we would still need to be able to do. But we'll make sure that we outline that as far as what does that mean for us and how we administer that. So we'll make sure we've got weekly communications coming out, especially over the next several weeks. We're also looking to make sure that we delay some of the assessments that we have coming up. With most assessments, there's usually a window of giving the assessments. In conversation today with staff, you know, I know that the concern is just around making sure we can connect with students and do what we can just with regular classroom instruction and education, the assessments, while certainly important and give us a lot of information about where our students are and their learning and progress and learning. If we have a window, I would much rather kind of push that window to the back end or even extend the back end of the window. So we're hoping to do that so that the focus can really be on students currently and staff and our ability to do that. So we won't be able to drop some of these assessments. They're still required. The State Superintendent did mention some of that today, but we are trying to push them back as far as possible so that we can just focus on what we can do right now during this current surge. Additionally, if we're looking at changes in protocols, we want to make sure that we can update that. We did have a little bit of confusion because last week there was a change in Department of Health protocols for quarantining. We'll highlight some of those. I'll get more of that information updated for you. We'll highlight some of those. I'll get more of that information updated from King County Department of Health tomorrow specifically. And then we'll make sure we communicate that out to everybody so that they know what those requirements are. The timeline is shorter and we want to make sure that we have people, if they are coming back feeling better with no symptoms, that they have a negative test and then that way they can be back out of quarantine. There's also differences in ages that they're looking at, whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated and that quarantine time. But for supplies, we do have masks available. We should have plenty of masks available in every single building. We also have take home ready tests available. I do realize that some people want to make sure that they have PCR tests at maybe at one of the testing sites. I know that there have been challenges waiting for results from lots of tests, so that's obviously a concern. But at from the state level, you may have seen or heard that the Governor Inslee is also wanting to make sure that schools have any tests that they need available to make sure that, that we're able to continue to have students that are not symptomatic or don't have anything are exhibiting any other symptoms. We did also have challenges last week with our website not updating, our website host, final site that also hosts several other surrounding school districts was down. Obviously a very frustrating situation because we use that to store a lot of our data and hopefully connect and communicate with, with people if they need any updated guidance. And that was very frustrating. It should be updated now. But either way, we need to make sure that we're communicating out on a consistent basis. We also want to make sure that our communications are concise so that we can get them translated quickly. So again, we've spoken with Soapbox, which is a company that we have contracted with previously, who can turn around some communications for us that are translated in a very short amount of time. We do have on, I think we have on our action agenda approval of the staffing report, the hiring of a communications director, and this will greatly aid our ability to get communications out as quickly as possible. So we're very excited about that position and what she will be able to do for us. Someone who was also here previously with us. So I think that's going to be helpful because she knows our community and, and has a good idea about where we can improve. And lastly, on the technology side, as I mentioned previously, we do, do have hotspots available and technology for students. I spoke with Mr. Baker today. What I've asked them to do is we have a list from families and students who previously needed hotspots and connectivity. So we're going to start with that list, but by the end of the week, we should have identified any students or staff who need connectivity at home in the event that we have to pivot to remote instruction. We want to make sure that that's already out there. The hardware, we also have that available. We can deploy that very quickly within 24 hours if we have to be able to do that. But I want to make sure the connectivity is not going to be an impediment. So by identifying those folks, we're hoping we can distribute those hotspots at the beginning of next week so that people just have them, they're available, and it's one less hurdle that we might have to deal with in the event that we have to make a pivot. So lastly, just, I, I think I'll get more information tomorrow from King County Department of Health, but you know, we're really wanting to make sure that, you know, we can be as supportive as possible to the buildings. It's incredibly, you know, it's an incredible strain for people. I, I definitely understand that. I appreciate all the efforts that have happened thus far. I do communicate with several other districts around us to see what kind of trends they have and any additional problem solving they have. So we are in a lot of communication and any support we need from Puget Sound DSD, they've also been extremely helpful. So look for a weekly communication. We should have one coming out if not tomorrow, by Thursday. We should have additional information for any updates on protocols. We do have some of those already available, but those have changed in the last week. So we just want to make sure people are aware of what the changes may be. So it's a whole lot of information. I would invite Ms. Maestro, if she's got any additional information to go ahead and chime in.
Hello, no, Miss Dr. Herndon covered basically everything. I think what I just wanted to go over was testing. We're continuing to provide rapid tests and have more coming in of the, both the take home and the rapid tests this week. Hopefully, we also have, like Dr. Herndon said, the changes to our guidance reflected that reflects CDC's recommendation. So that was changed during Friday afternoon last week. So we sent out communication and I believe it's available on the website. That's about it. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions when, when you're ready for those.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. These two are very different questions, but my first one, I'm going to give them, actually I have three of them. I'll give them to you and you can decide how to answer them. What, what have students been told about how they will work remotely when they're quarantining or when they're, you know, home with COVID? Do, have the teachers been able to put a plan in place so the kids know that the teacher's going to Zoom them or, or whatever? That they can connect remotely or, because we're hearing that students are just having to stay home and there's nothing. But so how are we helping our teachers to manage those students that are staying home? That's one question. Second question is, you may have heard that I got called by one of our departments to bring a rapid test because they needed one and I took it to the staff member who was at home to, so that indicated that everybody doesn't know we have those in the school district. So that's my second question. Can we make sure everybody knows so that that is there and available? And I would be curious as to how many the school district got as to what, what is the stockpile? What's it look like? How prepared are we? Because I know, I know we'll have to keep replenishing it, but. And then my third question comment is about masks. Are we giving out N95s? Because that's pretty clear that that's what the health department is telling the larger population. I don't know if they're telling schools that, but I'm just curious about that. So those are my three. Thank you.
Okay, I'll see if I can remember some of them. Some of them I'll be able to address. If I can address them tonight, then I'll make sure that we get back to you right away, like by tomorrow and I can track those down. So on the, what the expectations are, I think it has depended and there's probably some variation depending on if an entire classroom went out, if the teacher went out, if a single student went out and what that preparation was and the grade level. So I don't have all of those out for each one. But I do know that in some instances, I don't know about every instance, but I do know in some instances, the teacher was quarantined, they were able to do their teaching and students tuned in, and there could have been students who were in class as well as online, so they were able to see both of those. I will also say the other challenge that we have in this is I'm still trying to gain clarity about the governor's mandate from the beginning of the fall, which said that any students or parents who wanted in-person instruction needed to receive in-person instruction. In the event we shift to remote, I'm not, I'm not sure how that plays out and meshes with that particular governor directive. So I'm trying to seek clarification on that. I'm hoping to get that tomorrow. That's not, that wasn't really one of your questions, but it does address kind of how the delivery of instruction would happen if we had to go remote, but also had to serve in person. So I'm just trying to anticipate a little bit of that. The others, we, I thought we had made it known that we did have tests available at each school, but we'll certainly make sure that we do know that. I don't know what our particular number is. I do know that we received an additional shipment of tests. I think it was earlier this week or the end of last week, we had plenty, the beginning of last week, but I also know they've been getting used. So we do have them available. We also wanted to make sure that we have more coming our way and if we feel that our stockpile is low, we want to make sure that we have enough that we can respond to any demand that we may have. And again, the state has been really good about saying, you tell us what you need, we'll get them. So we, we can't really, we're not trying to hoard them because we want to make sure everybody has what they need, but we also don't want to run out in the event that we have to have them. And I'm trying to remember question number three. Can you refer?
N95s.
Oh, N95s. I will check on that. I'm not sure if we have N95s. We do have whatever the masks we have available, even if they're the temporary ones and they may not be N95 masks. I believe they are similar to the ones that you might find in a hospital or surgical piece. The only reason I know that is because the temporary ones I've seen, having just gone through surgery last week, that was the kind of mask I had to wear in the operating room and in the healthcare facility. So, but I will check to see what the masks are that we have available as well.
I would really encourage us to offer staff N95s.
Yeah, if we certainly, and there shouldn't be a stockpile issue for that. So in the past, that was a stockpile, you know, it was an accessibility issue, but we should be able to have those available for staff. And if we don't, we will try and secure them.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. If the state is willing to provide us with items, could they not get us PCR testing so that if these, if the rapid tests aren't very as reliable, wouldn't it be wise to get some PCR testing available for our families and staff?
I don't know what they have available to the test. I'll get clarity on that tomorrow and figure out what they're giving us. But certainly we want to make sure we're getting as accurate a result as we can have for anybody requiring a test, whether it be staff, students or families. So I, I'll find out from that and, and find out what we have access to.
Okay, thank you. And just so that we have a better understanding, can you give us numbers of absenteeism in each of the buildings? Because it just seems to me that it's, it's not very healthy to have staff members and admin covering for other people's classes. There's enough stress without them having that additional burden. And I'm concerned about admin being able to do their jobs, having to cover for all these. And I know the substitute pool is slim. But do you have numbers of, of students absent like this week especially? And has Hannah been able to update that? I know she's been swamped, but has she been able to update those numbers?
Well, we can get that to you. I don't have the numbers right offhand and I want to compare them also to what our regular attendance might be looking like from the fall. So I think that's probably an accurate piece. As you may know, attendance even pre-pandemic was not remarkably high. You know, it wasn't in the 95% range for my, for many buildings. So we're trying to do a comparison about what absenteeism looked like on a regular basis this fall, previous to the pandemic, and then what it's looking like now, just so we have a good benchmark about what absences look like, both that and for staff. So I'll get that information out.
Thank you. And then as compared to just even last week, numbers, it would be interesting to see if it's gone has increased significantly. Because I think, you know, when I, when I kind of hear numbers at the high school and middle school, they're very different than what we hear at the elementary. So maybe do we need to look at closures of some schools, but not others or?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. I'll get you some numbers for comparison.
Thank you.
So a question, a kind of follow-up on the mask issue. Are we getting, and you may not be able to answer this tomorrow when you talk to King County Public Health, but any more guidance on masks? I think there's been studies coming out recently that show that, you know, cloth masks are not worth much, surgical masks are better, and then the N95, KN95, KS94, you know, tightly fitted masks are significantly better in terms of spreading. And so the question is, you know, I think on our website, we just say the rules are that everybody has to be masked, but then the, you know, do we need a revision of that to, you know, higher quality mask or whatever, which can significantly reduce the, the spread? So anyway, curious about, you know, like I say, you may get some more guidance from that from King County Public Health, but that'd be interesting in that whole subject area.
Yeah, for sure. I'll make sure. I think the presentation that the State Department of Health had today, there's a lot of information, so I'm hoping we actually get it in a downloadable physical form so we can compare it to what we have. But any guidance on masks paired with vaccinated or unvaccinated, spread, whatever it may be, and then what we have access to, I'll make sure that I ask for some clarity from that tomorrow as much as possible.
Thanks.
I have a few questions. I'm sorry, Dr. Herndon, for you again. A few questions. Here's around the dashboard. Where are we getting, like, who's reporting those numbers to us? Is that coming from public health? Or are we relying on folks calling and letting us know? Where are those coming from?
I don't know if Nurse Maestro is still online or not to let us know where that data was coming from originally.
Well, yes. So the website was updated today, finally got on track and was able to update today's cases. The cases are updated by confirmed cases. So it might not be accurate in that, you know, I'll get a phone call later on in the daytime and get another case and I've updated the website already. But for the most part, it's only by communication from either, you know, staff or parents or, or the students themselves. And we verify that and then that's how I log that information. And then I go ahead and send that information over through lineless survey to the DOH.
Okay, thank you. And then are we considering a rapid positive to positive, right? Or are we waiting on a confirmed PCR positive before that's updated?
I'm so sorry. So the question I'm going to confirm again was, do we wait for a PCR after a positive rapid?
Correct.
Okay, so once, once we get a positive rapid PCR, excuse me, once we get a rap, positive rapid test, that's confirmative of the, of the positive case and we no longer follow that up with PCR.
Perfect, awesome. Thank you. Okay, so kind of any, a few other folks have spoken to it already. Dr. Bowlerjack asked a pretty good question, a good question around this, but I'm leaning a little bit more into how we're supporting students who have to switch to remotes. And it was clear that email that, or that comment, excuse me, rather, and then I've heard from other folks just that, you know, something, there, there's some pieces missing. There's, there's something that's not quite reaching, right, the students all of the time consistently. And so I'm wondering what support we could offer as a district, as more of the district and administrative level to really ensure that communication is strong, that it's happening and that, that, that families are getting the information they need. Because again, we're relying on the teachers to do a lot of that communication when we know that they are already strapped in. You've already spoken to the fact that they're stepping in when other folks are out. So I wonder, and I'm really, I challenge us to think about how we as a district can support that so that there's not a disruption in our young people's learning and we're not putting more work on our staff.
Yeah, we do have, we went through and previously in the fall, we had posted, we do have hired what are called quarantine specialists. So these are staff that are meant to help connect any students that are having to be quarantined. Um, we want to make sure that they're still able to do that. Um, and uh, so far they have been able to um, make sure that they um, are able to connect with as many students as possible. Obviously, when we have more going up, uh, more students who may need to be quarantined, it's going to be a challenge. But um, that's a position that we have had and hired. So we do have two of those currently within the district. We have a third that um, I think was just out briefly, but should be back uh in, in place. So um, we have that uh support there. We also have tutors that in the past and in the fall, students who were quarantined. We did have one-on-one tutors that connected with students as well. So again, we'll make sure that we put all of the resources that we do have available in this communication so that people will know what we do have available. Um, and if they're not able to access any of those resources, um, we just want to make sure, you know, if somebody said, we tried to get a hold of quarantine specialist, but we haven't heard back, you know, we want to make sure that we have that happening.
Um, yeah, so it sounds like we have some systems in place to support the work. Um, and there's still some things that are falling through the cracks. And so I think it'd be useful maybe even to reach out to some of those students who we've heard from even in the last week or two. And said, hey, what, where was the breakdown? Try to get a little bit more information so we can actually make a concrete plan on how we can r- really make sure we're moving forward in a supportive, responsive way. Um, and then I have just one other kind of follow-up question um, or, and then, and then a comment. Um, so um, again, we know that staff are burnt out. Um, we're all burnt out. Uh, COVID has been really challenging, right? We're all over it. Um, but how are we really helping to support now? And also think about mitigating the, the long and the short term impacts of the significant burnout that teachers are feeling right now? Um, and again, I hear that right now, um, we're staying open based on coverage, right? And, and, and relying on teachers to fill in in other places that's just creating an extra burden. So what, how, like, what's our plan um, to support and mitigate the burnout that's happening right now with our, with our staff?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think staffing, having as many subs available and hopefully not having to do uh staff covering um, like during their planned periods or other classes as much as possible. Um, you know, we, we have other times where, where we have had to do that. But uh, having COVID um, ever-present adds to that additional burden. So um, you know, it's a tricky balance uh that we're trying to do. But um, we're hoping to continue to do that and continue to have conversations with staff as much as possible. To hear back from them, what kind of support they would like to have or need. So um, we'll make sure that we have those connections as much as possible, especially, you know, throughout the rest of this week and coming up over the next several weeks. So we're hoping, again, what we were hearing from uh State Superintendent and Department of Health, you know, we're hoping we're getting close to this peak and we'll be on the downside, but we still have a couple of weeks for sure. So um, we're just, we have to continue to be um, monitoring the situation, see what we can do. So I know it's, it's a, it's a real challenge for everybody and we do want to be as supportive as possible.
I think we're a little bit unfortunately further away from the end of this particular peaks than we might want to think. Um, and again, I just want to encourage support and I appreciate you saying that we're gonna, you're gonna check in with staff. We really continue to ask what support looks like, because that is really critical, right? Support may not just mean covering for them, right? Support is about mental support, emotional support, providing other things um, that help them feel seen and heard and valued. Um, which um, you know, again, is going to be different and unique to every individual staff um, that we have in our um, community. Um, thanks so much for my question last, just comment. Um, I just wanted to make a note, and we had a long conversation on this the other day. Um, I noticed that one of our neighboring school uh districts did actually put out some information around um, uh, percentages of, of staff shortages. Um, and, and um, partnered that with, if percentage is out, this is what will happen. We will, we will, so they, they put out some specific guidance around what there as a district are monitoring. I think that would be really, really valuable for students if uh, if you need me to send it, I'm happy to share, uh, if you haven't seen that yet. Um, but I think that would kind of give folks some uh, some sense of uh, knowing one that we're monitoring and what we're monitoring and how. Um, but also some future planning so that they can kind of again, make some, make some positive decisions for themselves and for their family. Thank you.
I was just looking at the, the new report on the COVID um, site. And when it has Xs, um, by district staff, what does that mean? It doesn't have numbers. As the others.
Hello, so uh, it would just be the columns uh that says, um, you know, how many students are quarantining versus um, how many classrooms are quarantining? And the Xs just mean because they're district uh staff members, stuff like such as myself. Um, there, there are no students or kind of uh classrooms to be quarantined in that, in that particular row.
So last night I was listening to Superintendent of Instruction Rektal speak about um Everett and North King County, where there have been buildings that have had to shut down because of staffing shortages. And um, I just found it very interesting that, that we sort of look at what's happening here is that. That if, um, regardless if it is COVID or not, there's so much upper respiratory illness happening. Um, many of the symptoms um mimic um, what could also be um, possible COVID. Um, there's so many families, so many students, so many staff that have been exposed. And then when we're following CDC protocol, need to be on quarantine. There's so many reasons why people would be out, that if people are out, people are out. And so I just, I thought it was very, and Superintendent Rektal was very supportive, that if there's not enough staff, we can't do it. And, and so I just would be curious, what does that mean in our district? That if we have so many people out ill, what does that mean? Um, I will say this again, and I, I've said it before, I will say it again. Uh, as a mental health professional who's worked in crisis response situations, we are in the middle and we, we continue to experience this crisis, trauma, prolonged trauma, and it comes in waves and we're still in it. And it happens again. And when people are in that type of a situation, we need information. We need clear information, concise information, repeated information that in order for us to feel safe, we need to feel informed. And so um, just want to go ahead and put it out there again. Um, I'm, I'm, I've been listening to other districts, um, heard from a family and a neighboring district. Their principal is giving rates of absences each day. So that families uh, uh, know and staff knows where, where they're at with how many people are out ill for whatever reason. So COVID, upper respiratory, um, quarantined, whatever the reason is, it's all about safety and health. And so um, I found that to be really helpful. How about that if I were notified of where the schools are? So just want to um, state that I don't know if once a week communications are the most responsive. And then the last thing I'll share um, is in terms of the racial equity process, uh, decision-making tool. That um, how are we taking into consideration, I, you know, I'm hearing about Superintendent of Instruction. I'm hearing Department of Health, I'm hearing sort of those, those regional and other level um, in for, information guiding our choices and our, and our decisions. And those who are the most impacted, uh, we ought to be also hearing just as many of those voices as well. And so I would want to also make sure that we're regularly um, getting a pulse of what needs are. And um, I mean, we've got many people here who, who are wanting to learn more too tonight. So that's my input. Anything else? Sam, if you're open to it, this is a great opportunity if you'd like to share any thoughts.
Um, yeah, I actually have a quick question. So like for the students that are like quarantined, right? Do they have an option of doing remote learning or no? Or do you guys have like a plan set for those who are missing school? Because I feel like missing school, especially during this time, is challenging for students because at the end of the semester is coming up, and I feel like missing schools is definitely a challenge that students have to face on top of like the COVID cases rising. And yeah, I was wondering if there's a remote learning option for students who have to quarantine or that were exposed and still have to quarantine.
Yeah, I think uh, again, I mentioned it a little bit before, but if that were the case, we would want to make sure, one, that the students have um, whatever technology they would need to be able to look at remote instruction. Um, two, it would be coordinating with uh, whoever is teaching that particular classroom. In some cases, when students have quarantined, they have been able to um, remote in and see the instruction that's happening. Uh, three, there should be someone who, uh, one of our tutors who connects with a student that is in uh, remote status or quarantine status. So um, if that were the case, uh, I really appreciate that perspective. Because, you know, I think what our um, student rep is referring to is, yeah, I mean, it's important, class time's important. Um, and we want to make sure you are as connected as possible, especially coming up. Folks who may be, you know, some of the high school folks, I mean, all students want to make sure that they're still progressing with their education. But um, for others, there are certain deadlines that they're looking at, preparation for uh, credits, especially seniors. Any other high school students who are like, look, I got to make sure I'm connected. This credit for this class is extremely important and I don't want to get behind. So um, we want to make sure we're supporting you as much as possible. Um, so that should be the case. Um, and if it's not, then I want to make sure that, that we know that that's the case. So I'm happy to connect with you um, tomorrow. Uh, student rep, Pia Pito, and um, I can help make that hopefully clear, whatever the options may be. And then that way, if other students were to reach out to you, um, you can help point them in the direction. But I'm happy to connect with you on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe communication could be designed so that then it can go out to all the other students too, right? So that might be helpful. There's uh, one more barrier that I'll just add. I haven't heard it, so I'm going to just name it. Um, people are having a hard time scheduling appointments for, for testing because there's such a high demand. And if that's what's being required for people to return, that is, that's been a, a serious issue as well. And so there's like, there's multiple, um, multiple issues along with being able to be tested, both to find out, but then also at a later time if needed. Um, that's a, um, I've had, I've heard from multiple um, folks that are having a hard time just trying to find their calling all around. And that's if they have transportation to be able to get somewhere where they can get tested. And then the ta- the take home, they get sent away, um, labs and everything are very far behind right now. So there's, there's delays, there's issues with that. So that's another thing that just want to make sure folks are aware.
Yeah, again, hopefully getting more clarity from uh, King County tomorrow about what that, what they are seeing in the region and any guidance they have around testing and result.
If community members have further questions, Dr. Herndon, um, is there, I, how are we? How, I guess, is the district fielding questions, where will they get their answers?
Yeah, we do have, um, I believe we do have um, some connection points for that. Um, what we can do is, again, we have a robo-call that we are scheduling for either as far or Thursday. We'll make sure information, any information and connection um, with folks who can get back to them immediately, including uh, the name of our quarantine specialist so that they know who to connect with specifically. Um, so we want to make sure that we can put that out, but we also want to make sure they're available at each of the buildings for any other principals or staff, not that they have to put that out, but that they know where that resource is to help connect them to that.
Anything else?
Just uh, I know that you said that you were gonna gather some information and circle back around and share some of that with us. I just wanted to make sure that there were two things on your radar. I think I would like to see kind of where we're at um, percentage-wise of absences um, for both staff and, and kids. Um, and then potentially a comparison the last few weeks, um, or obviously the weeks leading up to winter break. Um, and I'm so sorry, now I forgot my other one, so that's what I was like.
We'll be, yeah, I'll be circling that back out.
Okay, thank you.
And not just percentages, but total numbers would be interesting to see.
And my, my final two thoughts on this would be, one, a reminder that we're student-centered. So that means whether it's a individual that's being quarantined or a whole class or a teacher. Um, we need to be able to address every situation if we're student-centered. And um, also the fact that we have eighty-one people attending tonight. To me, unless there's something else on the agenda that drew them, I'm thinking this is the conversation that they've been waiting to hear and uh, they'd love to be involved in. Um, so I just, I think that this is an important topic that we need to get communication out about.
Indeed.
All right. We'll go ahead and move along. That's all right with everyone. Legislative updates.
So in the midst of all this, um, the legislature has um, started up for their um, what they call their short session, which is um, now through the end of, or through March tenth. And um, as I did last year, I'm providing this sheet of um, references to various bills that I'm trying to keep track of um, together with the, the links. Uh, if you want to find out, uh, go in more depth into any of these, these are links to the legislative website, which talks in-depth about each bill and what it's doing and where it is in the process and so forth. So um, I'm just going to touch briefly on a few of them. So there's, one of the big things is um, adding more uh, nurses, uh, social workers, counselors and psychologists to the uh, to the school funding model. Um, and there are, there's a couple of bills out there, one on the House side, one on the Senate side that are, the focus for this first year is, is going to be on uh, on nurses in particular, adding more nurses. The bills also have um, smaller class sizes in there, but that's not likely to get funded at all this year. I think that's kind of a future one that uh, all these are subject to the budget. And so which, and the budget bill happens later in the, in the session. But um, anyway, the, the issue that I uh, have currently with, with both these bills is they're great adding more of these um, support staff, we all need it and everybody needs it. The problem is that they haven't, the recommendation is not to do it in an equitable fashion. In other words, uh, these allocations would go uh, the same to every school. So that, for example, a school with five percent poverty would get the same allocation of social workers as a school with ninety percent poverty. And so that's not equitable. And so these bills are going to be heard in a committee in the House and Senate Committee this week. And I plan on uh, testifying on that, the exact issue, the issue of equity and the, and how it's allocated. So hopefully there'll be some, we can get some um, focus on that. Um, there's, those are the first two on the list there, uh, fifty-five thirty-six. That's an interesting uh, bill. It's, it's offered by Senator Hasegawa. And if this is the first year that this concept has been brought to the legislature. So I don't think it's, it's going to pass this year. But the concept is to establish a collaborative school-based governance model, which um, I think is, it's interesting for us because I think it's kind of the direction that we're trying to go. Uh, we have a number of initiatives, the idea is to get more um, collaboration and co-design and the decision-making process in school districts. And you know, the, the work we're doing with the race and equity toolkit, the, the powerless to powerful schools that Mr. Howard's working on, the community uh, meetings that we're talking about with the liaisons, the uh, steering together committee. I mean, there's a lot of things that are going on in our district that I think would um, fit right in line with this and be supportive of this. It's, it's obviously going to take a while for the legislature to go through it, but it's, it's. it's, it's an interesting concept and I'm going to be watching it. I'm not sure how they're going to implement it from a, from a state-based model, but anyway, it's an interesting concept and I'll be watching that one. There is a couple of bills around enrollment stabilization. So this is as people may be aware, districts get allocated most of their money based on the number of students that are enrolled. With the COVID situation that we're in, there's been a significant reduction in most, in the enrollment in most districts, including ours, which hits our bottom line rather severely. And last year, the view was that this temper, this enrollment decline is probably temporary and should start coming back when we get out of COVID. But of course, now with Omicron variation, we're getting a whole new hit on that. So it's hard to say when that's going to be out. The last year, we, so last year, the legislature allowed districts to get their funding based on the two nineteen, two thousand nineteen fall enrollment numbers, which were prior to COVID. This bill here would extend that stabilization fact to this year as well, given the fact that it looks like probably not going to come out of the COVID enrollment decline anytime necessarily soon, hopefully before the end of the year, but we'll have to see. So anyway, that one's on the list. The other one, fifty-five eighty-one is related to pupil transportation. We've had the issue for years of not being adequately funded for transporting our students experiencing homelessness, special education students and so forth. And so they're, they're proposing to actually see how big that issue is. That is, this year asks districts how much of that transportation, that exceptional transportation is underfunded and then refund that to districts. So we'll see if this passes. What, if it passes, it would definitely be of us to keep very good track of these extraordinary or the, the transportation that go outside of the normal yellow bus kind of transportations, getting to students to and from school because we may be able to get that money recovered in the following year. There's sixteen oh one is talking about giving more support to students once they get into post-secondary, students that are experiencing homelessness or foster youth into the post-secondary system, which would be helpful, I know, for a lot of our students. And the last one I have there is, I think one that would be of interest to our students in general, and that is reducing the graduation requirements from twenty-four credits to twenty and then giving more flexibility about how you can, you know, achieve the graduation potential. So that's one that's going to be interesting. I'm sure there's a lot of students that are going to be interested in weighing in on that one. Just a couple of other issues, the, the School Directors Association and the superintendents associations are going to be having their meeting with legislators in Olympia. The week of January thirty-first, there will also be a a presentation on Sunday, January thirtieth, from one to five, which anybody's, anybody is welcome, the school directors are welcome to attend if you want to register. They're going to be, we'll be hearing from, it'll be remote and we'll be hearing from the governor from superintendent Rektal. Some students and various things on issues related to the legislative session. And, oh yeah, the one other thing that I'm, I'm working on, I discovered a little glitch in the, the way that these additional staff, the nurses, social workers, counselors are funded for CTE, that is career and technical education students. It turns out because of a weird thing in the budget bills, we actually get less lower allocation of nurses, social works and counselors for, for CTE students. Normally, if you're a CT students, which we're trying to get more of them because we get more funding in terms of teachers that get smaller class size and also in terms of MSOC's material supplies and operating costs. But in this area, for some reason, and I've been still researching it to find out why in the world we would get less in terms of the nurses, social workers, the support staff for it. And so I'm working on that one to see if that can get fixed. So anyway, that's where that is, and that's my report on the legislature.
Thank you, Director Larson. Any questions, comments, or shall we move along? More to come, right, Director Larson?
Yeah, there's always, there's always more, pardon me.
Oh, I was just gonna make a funny and say, I wish we had a, we're in bullishous conversation around legislation as we do. The last item, maybe one day.
That may come.
Yeah, I just, I just want to mention for our student rep, Sam Pia Pito, there's quite an active statewide group of student representatives from all the districts and all the states and all the state around the state that are active in this, in this legislative arena. So if, if that's an area of interest to you, I can connect you up with, with the group who's doing that and you can, you're more than welcome to come on any of these virtual meetings that we have with legislators and all of that. So just, you can just drop me a line if you're interested in that and I can connect you up with that. So that's it. Thanks. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I heard two, so thumbs up. Is everyone else cool with it? All right. All right, we'll go, we'll go ahead and move along to board discussion. Policy six nine seven zero, naming of facilities. And Dr. Herndon, will you brief us?
Yes, in this particular case, the naming of facilities, we want to make sure that this policy aligned with the most recent guidance and change in state law around especially mascot use. Again, so we want to make sure that the naming of school facilities, that's not specifically called out in the mascot case, but we want to make sure that that was consistent and that that language aligned with the other policies. So that's what we see in this particular case.
Any other questions?
I guess.
I actually, I think, point of order, I think I need to do motion, motion to approve. And then if we we'll go ahead and do that. So a motion to approve.
This isn't up for approval. This is just board discussion.
All right, good.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I appreciate it. Director Larson.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I was looking for what, the, I mean, there's the procedure here and the policy. Okay, so we're, there's a revision, there's a proposed revision. Are we, so are you looking for comments on the proposed revision to the policy? Is that what we're looking for here?
I believe so.
Okay.
Mostly the board needs to guide us in, in the direction as they, you guys have oversight of policies. Do you want this line in here? Right here? Or do you want it to be the optional alternative language, which is here? And any other additional comments?
I have a comment. I'm open to having, using the optional language, but I also wanted to potentially add. And as Dr. Herndon, you, you know, made the decision or thought that it was best to seek you know, approval also from Duamish, the Duamish tribe, which I think is so important because that is really the land at which we sit. And while they're still seeking federal recognition, I wanna, I think it would be valuable for us to consider adding that in. That way, you know, there's no question that that is that we would seek their approval if, if we decide to go with that optional language.
I agree. And just to clarify, the way that the law's written, it actually explicitly says federally recognized tribes, which does a disservice to our, our tribes that exist that may not be currently federally recognized. And so that's, that's, that's what I think I hear you clarifying, Carly, that that we need to make sure that we are acknowledging ancestral lands and tribal people.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
So could it, could it say federally and locally recognized tribe?
That's what I was just gonna suggest too, that it says local and federally recognized tribe, because then it's inclusive of both and would have to get the approval of both.
The other thing that, that I was, if we look at this, it says, well, news district buildings and facilities will be named after persons. These various persons or after geographic characteristics of the area with, which the facility is located. I don't know, when I was reading that the first time, that, that seems a little overly restrictive to me. I'm not sure. I mean, I, there's lots, there's potential. I think for naming things other than just for people and geographic characteristics potentially. Which is, like last time we were discussing this, what I was suggesting was that we might get, that we would get some input from other folks in the community about if there's other things that they might want to have on this list of naming options.
So would that go in the procedure or the policy?
Well, since the policy says that, you know, can
It's limited, yeah.
Yeah, so I, and I don't know how, you know, exactly. I guess I'd probably have to think some more about if it could be worded in. I mean, I don't know what those other things are necessarily, but I'd just be interested in hearing if, if people thinks there, there are other things that we should consider and maybe, or if there's a way to word this, that's totally, it's more open in terms of what things could be, how things could be named.
I, I think I, I think I hear you saying, Director Larson, that that these, that, that it's almost, this, this statement is framing the types of relevant naming options, which would include, you know, and then they give examples, statesmanship, pastor US presidents, which is very centric, that there very well might be additional people, places, representatives and that are not necessarily US-centered. And so I, in terms, I mean, I would like us to maybe just at least look at that. Maybe there's some bias here in this statement.
I was trying to figure out what aviation high school fit in this.
What, help me, will you help me connect what I'm trying to see the connection?
No, I was just, you know, Dave was trying to think of things that could be outside of what these choices are. And aviation high school is not, and Lisa.
Although the, the full name goes beyond just aviation, it's raised back.
It does have a name associated with it, yes.
But then, I would, that would not be permitted here because Raise Back is the name of a company. I think, and so.
So, so there we go. May, the company may have been named after a person.
It's possible, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we can the how would be covered in the policy part, so we would obviously go through that. But I am, if I'm kind of hearing some of the feedback and from President Apola Ryder, I, I'm not, it almost seems like you don't need to name US presidents or national senators. I mean, the kind of first part of that sentence really gets you to attain national, local prominence in the field of, and then it lists that. So I'm not quite sure why the, the need to call up US presidents or Washington National Senators or reps. I mean, it seems like you would get there without making that specific mention.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it's almost like you could name it for a person, a geographic area, an idea. A concept, I don't, you know, I mean, lie limited.
Yeah.
Or why does it have to be attained national or local? What if someone has attained world recognition? Like World Health Organization or, so I just think it's very centric. I don't know, I'm not really sure. I just, I, I think it's framing the policy and that there's, that we, maybe we can continue to look at this with an anti-racist lens.
Yeah, why don't I, I can take some of that feedback and, and look at that, maybe even getting rid of the national or local and just saying attained prominence, because that expands it to be the most general. And then eliminating US presidents in Washington, I can continue to look at some of the language before we bring it back for our first reading.
I don't know, Samuel, are you still here? I mean, do you, I'm wondering if, if you have any, any input on, you know, what we might, how we might think about naming school facilities? Could be a school, could be a you know, athletic.
I want to go to Bishop Tutu High School.
I do too.
I don't know, I guess Samuel's not with us at the moment. Okay, so anyway, yeah, it would be great to get some more input.
Great, we'll do that.
All right, any other discussion at this time? Dr. Herndon, do you have what you need from us at this time and?
I believe so. And if I need further clarification, I'll reach out to board members to see if there's any additional feedback.
We'll move along to the board discussion, board retreat update.
Okay, so in this particular piece, myself, President Apola Ryder and Director Bullerjack met with from the Puget Sound DSD, Eileen Yashina and Matthew Gobrinsen. And we also met with from Was that Amy Cast, who've been helping us out with progress in working together as board, as well as a lot of additional professional development that aligns with the race and equity work that we've been having. So in that, we talked about the board retreat coming up January twenty-second and the list of possible community agreements, sent an email out to board members last week, asking them if they had any specific questions about any of these or needed clarification from any of those folks. Amy Cast, Eileen or Matthew, to reach out to them specifically if there was any particular clarity with that. But the idea was also to just speak tonight to see if there was any prioritization. This list was also developed before Director Hoover was on the board, so we wanted to make sure she had an opportunity to chime in about any of these particular topics. We obviously won't be able to cover all of them, so the idea was to narrow this down a bit.
So a little bit more on that, we kind of ended the conversation with them about having a kind of the first two hours of the three hour. about having a, kind of the first two hours of the three hour time be on, uh, how, I, I guess I would label it as how we work together. So around community agreements around the transformational, leadership, wait, what's it called? Transformational Relationship and Partnership Framework, using those things to talk about, how we wanna move forward together. And then the last hour was gonna be maybe looking at one or two of these, or three of these, um, in particular, and using our new, uh, working, way of working together to look at some specific, what we wanna do. Um, so, yeah, I just kinda wanted to give that framework. Does that sound fair, Bridget?
I think, yeah, I, and just to build upon that is that there's overlap in some of these, and that this is very much a brainstorm. And I think that, um, what would be helpful is hearing from the rest of the group about additional ideas, anything on there that maybe there's things missing, um, just to get some additional input. And the other thought I have is regardless of what we end up doing at the retreat, if there's important items on this list, as a group, we can also look to sort of the yes ands. So it's not an either or. Um, we don't have to be in a, we don't have to sort of look at this as, um, of a scarcity. We can look at this as, this is, these are all important and there's different ways to go about doing them. And so that, those are just my thoughts about this list. Um, I, I, I'm very open and flexible. I do think that if we are working, we could use a community agreements as a mechanism to fold into centering student, student voice, student brilliance in the decisions, our, um, anti-racist leadership, you know, and how we transform, like that works into it. Um, inclusive practices feeds into it, but then if there's specific items, say maybe goals for the year or things that we would like to see happen in the year, we can identify those. And I'll just open it up to the rest of the folks. If you have any other ideas, input.
So, yeah, to me, a lot of, to me, a lot of these can be combined. So, you know, the, the operating principles, the Board Superintendent Expectation Document, those are things that we've had in place. And so to me, they logically fold into this whole thing of how we do business, community agreements and, uh, all these things. So, so I think there's, there's a lot of these that can get kind of scrunched down into, into, um, fewer things without necessarily, eliminating, so, I mean, probably we'll have to drop some off, but a lot of these, I think, can be combined, at least in my mind.
Yeah, one of the things that I've been thinking about and that, um, is, uh, potentially maybe a discussion around like how we, um, share power, um, within the board and amongst the board and like where there may be opportunities for, um, kind of more, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, like, uh, more strict, uh, specific, oh my gosh, tasks or not tasks, but like projects, right, that, that individuals are owning. Um, sorry, thanks for working, I got there. Um, uh, so I think there could be some value, potential, there's uh, different things that bring each of us to the table that we're super passionate about. Um, and when we're passionate about things, like that's what, what drives us to do good work. Um, so I think there could be an opportunity to really hone in on what those, those things are and then share power in a really cool way. Um, which also kind of feeds into the idea, I think it'd be really cool to, um, not only have our district goals, but also have both individual goals, um, and, um, potentially a few board goals, um, that we wanna achieve as a group. Uh, uh, the unit's kind of separate, but also in support of the larger district goals. So those might be two things that I would, um, add long-term, I don't necessarily think that's a this retreat.
Carly, I, those ideas, I think also align nicely a, as we continue with the strategic work, district work that we're going to be doing too. So I think it's very timely, it's very, um, appropriate to sort of, um, look at our, our meeting in a way like that. It'll help us do our, continue to work with a strategic plan.
You know, when, when we were meeting, talking about this, I was feeling really uneasy as trying to represent what all of us need to get from this retreat or need from each other. So that's why, um, Amy and Eileen and Matthew have opened themselves up to talk to any of us individually. If we wanna talk more about, uh, what we, what we find would be helpful from this retreat. So I really encourage you to reach out if you have ideas that either aren't on here, that you wanna talk to them about or need, particular needs that you feel like you have. I, I didn't feel like I could represent all of us well, so, um, there's your opportunity. I hope you'll take advantage of it.
Well, I added some thoughts on here and I see that they're on here, so I'm, I'm fine.
Great, Edna.
I think, I think too, it'd be really nice if we could get to know each other better than we do at this particular point on a personal level. I think that would help us work together more efficiently and effectively.
I agree. A good old-fashioned community builder would be super. Um, one of the things that just came to mind, actually, I was looking at that last bullet point, Tewa City Council slash Tewa School Board Meeting. Um, I wonder if that could also be translated or expanded to, you know, have some ongoing meetings or gatherings with other CBOs or other organizations that are doing work in our community, um, and having that, like, how do we build that in to our culture? Um, I think it'd be a really interesting thing to talk about.
Yeah, I agree. That's not on the list, so that is something that, um, I think once again can be folded, but im- improving our collaboration and partnerships with community-based organizations. I don't see families, so I'll say and families. Did I miss family somewhere on this list? Well, if, if anyone else has other ideas or input, um, please feel free to send them to, who should they send them to? Debbie, Dr. Herndon?
I can send them either to myself or Ms. Cor, and then we'll make sure we get them to Amy, Eileen, and Matthew, because they were gonna take all that input too, and then work on the agenda and get that agenda out to folks, uh, hopefully this weekend. So we'd have at least a week ahead of time to know what to expect on the 22nd.
All right. Uh, question-only presentations. We'll go ahead and move along. I guess, are there, I'll sort of take it by item. Um, for, is there any questions on A that you'd like to do further up discussion? I read a diagnostic assessment data.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just want me, just wanna do one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess the, the, the question, um, I'm trying to make some sense of, um, when I looked at the, um, page 10, so this is the first year that Foster High School took this, um, uh, i-ready reading distribution and when I look at it, you know, it's pretty alarming if you just look at it on its own. I mean, 77% of the seniors are three or more years behind in, in reading. And, and I need a little help in kind of how to interpret that. I see that, you know, only, uh, what, 66% of the seniors actually took the test, which is, you know, um, a low mark. And then, you know, this is the first year that we've used this one for, for high school. So, um, you know, how accurate do we feel it is? In one of the questions, I think Mr. Howard talks about, this is one data point, correct? Uh, the question is, what else, you know, what else should we be looking at here? I mean, I need some help with, with kind of the context of that, because on the surface, it's pretty, pretty alarming. I don't know whether Mr. Baker, Mr. Howard, Dr. Herndon, anybody?
Um, well, if you, we have like 100 running start students, and so those students were not, um, were not tested using the i, the i, the i-ready. Those students are obviously very close to college-ready, uh, reading level. And so, so those students were taken out of it, and so were the students at the Puget Sound Skill Center. Um, so there's that to consider. Um, the other piece that we're going to do is we're going to do the reading inventory, um, at the same time, as at a similar time that we're doing i-ready to match up those results. Uh, again, two data points to see how accurate, uh, both assessments are. Um, I could say that. And, um, as far as the 66% of, um, seniors taking the assessment, um, we would have liked a higher number, but again, based on running start and based on students that are headed to the Skill Center, um, that might be an accurate reflection, um, of who we stood, of, of who took the assessment. Um, but we are looking at another point, which is the reading inventory, which they've done for years, and, um, we'll compare the two.
Okay, yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's really helpful because the 100 running start, I mean, yeah, as you said, they're probably college-ready, so they would probably score high on this test. So that's, uh, that's really important to know when we're looking at this data. Do you have a, maybe, okay, and so that, as far as the accuracy of this, I know, you know, we've talked about at the elementary level, there's a high correlation, uh, between, uh, how scores draw, get there and plus in relation to the state test, uh, we don't necessarily know that for the high school. So if you're gonna use the reading inventory on that one, uh, that'll give us some more information. I was interested in the one comment, um, when we, when you broke this down a little bit, uh, by category, the students seem to do well with phonics and high-frequency words and struggle with vocabulary and comprehension of both literature and informational text. So how are we, how are you thinking about using that to inform the instructional process?
My only comment on that, and I'll defer, um, I'll defer the rest of the, rest of the answer, but, um, the fact that students aren't struggling, uh, with phonics and phonemic awareness is, is a very good indicator that we are on the right track in terms of going to vocabulary and then to, uh, different comprehension, um, essentials that students need. So that actually was very good news, um, that they aren't in, um, that particular state of reading development. So, um, I, again, looking at the results, I feel that's a, that's a, that's a positive, positive point on that. Um, a portion of these students are probably, um, uh, MML learners, and so that's also something to be considered. And as far as the strategies and stuff, I defer to Mr. Howard on that, if he has any context. It's like we may have lost Mr. Howard for a little bit, so we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, that was, that was the questions I had on that one.
Here I am, talking on mute. Any other questions? If not, we can move on to B. Review of SMART goals. Any questions there?
Not for me.
How about C?
Oh, sorry, could I, sorry, can I go back to B? There was just a question I asked, and I wanted to make sure I was reading the report correctly, um, on the column, um, where it asked for the, the indicators of the different elements, um, in that first, uh, line there. Um, I had asked about potentially adding additional indicators or elements. Um, and the response I got just said refer to Dr. Howard, so I just wanted to bring it here. Um, just about adding, uh, potentially race, LGBTQ, um, and, um, information around disability as indicators that we could potentially disaggregate data into. Um, specifically because as we're thinking about measuring belonging, um, I think it would be really important to be able to break those down, for folks, so we can really say, okay, members of the LGBTQ community are feeling a sense of belonging, um, and so on.
Yeah, I think we would, um, identify and be consistent with other areas that we have with breakdown. Students with disabilities and race, we do already, we should already have in the disaggregated data elements. LGBTQ, uh, I'll see what we have in there as well. But, uh, I'll have to refer back to what we have for, um, all of the identifiers for students. It's an excellent point, you know, student belonging is a crucial aspect, so we wanna make sure we're able to identify each of the groups for their sense of belonging.
I think you're talking muted again.
Thank you, I am. C, stay in school coordination report.
Okay, so, yeah, that one, um, so we have these, um, high absence, unexcused absence rate at Foster and Shulter, and, um, the, the explanation was related to, you know, students, uh, well, at Foster, it was, um, kind of mental health issues, uh, housing instability, transportation, students working to support their families, um, and then at Shulter, it was, um, supporting families, um, not having been in, in, in-person school. So I'm wondering is, do, do we have any, any ideas of how to, um, address some of these issues? So we have, you know, we have the, we have the good chunk of Esther dollars that'll be coming our way. And so, you know, does anybody, is there any, uh, thinking about how to, um, you know, potentially use some of those dollars to address, address some of these issues of absences, particularly at the secondary level?
Yeah, I think, uh, currently Ms. Birdsong's actually going through, uh, using our race and equity toolkit to get feedback about expenditures for Esther dollars. So this would be one of those areas where I think she would probably be receiving, uh, feedback around that. And you're exactly right. I mean, this is the purpose of having those dollars, uh, supporting students, getting them re-engaged for a variety of reasons. Uh, some of those responses you can see are, are ones that are, that have always been probably identified areas of, of engagement, uh, and attendance issues. Others, um, additionally magnified just because of the other issues that, you know, global health pandemic. As, uh, Director Apola Ryder could, could mention, I'll, I'll say Dr. Apola Ryder on this particular case, that, uh, these kind of crises just magnify whatever the challenges are that people have. So, um, if those are already existing challenges, you, you know, fold into that, these kind of, of, um, incidents that happen, whether they be public health incidents, they can be natural disasters, anything that further challenge the, the setting that someone may be in, just magnifies those situations. So we're fortunate that in this case, we do have funds to help support that. So that's what's really great about this is we do have some resources available. And hopefully by identifying that, I think one of the items that we've talked about, uh, in these expenditures is if we end up finding something, um, that we believe really impact If we end up finding something, um, that we believe really impacts and works well. That can be something we can use all the time and make that a budget priority. So I think having these additional resources is certainly helpful, um, to help us identify some areas. And, uh, ways of connecting, re-engaging students that we may not have done before.
Did we ever locate where that funding, uh, that Kathy referred to? That she has not had access to that was supposed to be specifically for this? There were some questions about it.
I see Kathy and our attendees. I don't know if she has ability to, uh, be a panelist. There we go. Thank you.
Hi. I'm sorry, I was, I was getting on as a panelist. So was there a specific question?
Yeah, I, I know that you had brought up the question about where the funding had gone that was, uh, designated for this. And I'm just wondering if we ever located how that has been used or what the status of that is.
Kathy's on there right now. She can respond to it.
Yeah, um, I have not been given like a budget code or budget dollars. Specifically to spend on truancy and re-engagement. And, um, we had talked about it back in August and September. Um, and I had not heard anything back. Um, I really need to stress that. This work can't be done if there's no budget. I mean, there's nothing that, um, besides me reaching out to families. On an everyday basis, I average about twenty phone calls a day to different families. Trying to schedule meetings to find out what's going on. I call, I text and I email. So there's three modes of communication. Um, the biggest thing is now that, um, the state has changed the way that we file truancy petitions. And we have to do a lot of this, um, legwork prior to fa- filing truancy petitions. They want us to do more of, um, work before that happens. Because they want to avoid any more additional trauma to families, especially if they're being faced with going to court. So one of the first things that they ask is that we do, um, an awards assessment or, or another, um, approved assessment. Um, the warrants being probably the best out there because it specifically targets barriers to attendance. Um, and that is put on by Washington State University. They created the warrants. So that would have been, that's probably the highest priority right now. With trying to move forward. Um, I was in a, I also have access to King County's, um, attendance and truancy and re-engagement workshops. Um, I had one today at four o'clock and I had invited five students and of the five, only one attended. Um, I do, we have them once a week and every week there's probably five to ten people I've invited. Um, but there's not a whole lot of engagement. So, and they're virtually. So it's pretty easy for them to attend via their phone. It, they used to be in person for two hours in Renton. But they've now done, do these, um, virtually for an hour.
You're, you're inviting the kids that are having trouble with truancy?
Yes, it's a, it's a great, um, presentation that they, um, put together, Mr. Dorsey with Unleash the Brilliance. They talk about fake plan fly and they talk about different, um, paths that students have taken. The presentation is actually given by students. So they're peer-to-peer mentors. And, um, there's some interactive questions and kind of like, uh, a question and answer, um, part of it. And, um, the students usually respond. Um, and then once they attend, I follow up with them. And kind of talk to them about, you know, what did you think about it? What'd you get out of it? You know, what do you, you know? Where do you see you in that presentation? And kind of get some ideas and then try to work with them on improving, um, attendance or, uh, seeing where the, you know, whatever path they want to take. So those are a few things that we have available to us. So the workshops are free, so that's good. Um, the warrants is not. And then there is, um, King County has come up with a community attendance support team. It's kind of like a community engagement board, but it's countywide. Um, if you do a referral, it can take about a month to get somebody on to their calendar. Um, I currently only have one family involved and that's three students, two elementary and one middle school student. That is part of that. Um, there's just not a, um. They have a lot of people that they're, they're meeting with. So it's kind of. Hoping that they are opening it up more, but, um, they only have so many slots. So, um, that's why it's important that we start moving forward with community engagement boards. And trying to build that at our district level. Therefore, it will be more reflective of our community and the people that we serve and the needs that they have. Um, when I meet with the cast team from King County, it's more of a countywide, um, group of people there. It's not spec- not specific to Tukwila.
I think that community engagement group is key here. And I know that you are overworked, just trying to keep up with the students that you're trying to help. What, what do you need to be able to pull that group together? Or what do we need to do to help pull that group together? Do you have ideas or?
Well, I've had a lot of training in how to create a CEB. Um, it's just a matter of finding. I'm trying to say, I guess it would be trying to find a group of people who are willing to work on it, to create it. So that it is, um, reflective of our community, of our school community. I have some great ideas about making sure that we have, um, we try to partner with some community partners, um, tribal, uh, mental health. Um, maybe some foster, um, care, McKenna Vento, you know, just people that could be involved. Um, community engagement boards are just that. It's the community. It's not. And I'm not trying to say this in a mean way, but it's not like the principal sitting there trying to talk to a family. It is the community coming and surrounding this family and offering their help and willing to listen. So it's more, um, geared towards that. So finding people that are willing to be part of this, um, board. And who are willing to take the time. It is, it is time consuming. Um, some districts have them once a week. Um, some districts, um, and they allow, I think, only three per week. Some do six per week. It, it just varies. So just kind of finding a group of people who are willing to, to take this on as a task. It's not a one-person job. It's definitely a committee.
Yeah, I think you, you've got a lot of support from, I know, from, from me and from probably from all of the board members. Um, and I can think of lots of people in the community that would probably want to be involved with this. It's just a matter of how, how do we pull that together when you are so overworked at this point?
It's, thank you. It's, um, it's, it's, it's really hard work, but it's, I'm passionate about it. Um, I just want to say, I know we gave you guys, I gave you guys some numbers in the, in the presentation. And I just, and I didn't want to, I, I just, it was kind of a shock factor even for me to see those numbers that high. Um, but I know there's a couple of things that I, I, I want you guys to take and think about. A lot of our, um, our absences are not, um, accurately put in. Meaning we have a lot of families that do not contact the schools. And say the reason why their child is out or their student is not coming to school. Um, and, and that is something that when we start our, hopefully we can build, uh, an attendance awareness campaign for next year. Starting in late August, that, that's the, that's the conversation we need to have with parents. It's, we understand that not everybody has a positive, um, history with calling a school or being part of a school. But we need to let them know that the communicating with the school is the most important thing. Um, I think. I saw that especially when I gave, uh, Mr. Dragunov asked me to get some, um, numbers to him. About students who had missed the whole first week of school in jet, you know, when we came back from break. And I just wanted to say, that included students that were missing, that were excused for vacations as well. So we have a lot of students that were out that missed a day or two, um, Monday and Tuesday due to vacation. Or because of the snow and things like that. So we have to look at how we look at this, um, information that we have. And make sure that it is, um, it's accurate and, and that, and how we report it. Because I don't think, I think there's a lot of, um, absences that are on those, in those numbers. That, um, are, you know, COVID-related, vacation-related and things like that. So it's not just unexcused absences.
So is, is there, um, I guess this would be a question for, um, Ms. Birdsong or Dr. Hernan. What, is there a region, a reason we don't have a budget for this, for this program?
We do have, um, budget allocated. It's just, um, getting that part set up as far as just building it. So OSPI does give dollars, um, allocate, they do allocate dollars for truancy. It's not a lot. Um, I can't quote the number, somewhere around three thousand, maybe four. Um, so it's not a lot. But, um, I will be following up with, uh, Kathy regarding the budget.
Okay, good. Yeah, and you know, I mean, if, like I say, we got Esther dollars floating around, you know. Seems like would be potentially, if it could be applied to this, would be a good choice as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. Just to add on to that, if the, if the number, which I think was included in the presentation, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. Um, would, looks like it would cover at least the warrant assessment, getting that started. Um, so that could be, I think that would be really valuable from what I'm hearing. Um, and then I'm, I'm wondering, thinking about the conversation we were having a while ago around incentivizing participants, um, in the assessments. And I wonder if this could be a great, another opportunity to potentially find some funding. Whether I don't, I don't know what that could look like, whether that's funding that's already in our budget. Um, though I know that's tricky or a grant opportunity to potentially find a way to incentivize community participation in this effort. I mean, I imagine that most folks in our community will be passionate about this and still, um, may not have the time to be able to dedicate. Um, that, that's needed. Um, so incentivizing is something that could be really valuable. So just wanted to plug that again here.
And along those lines too, um, in terms of like, in thinking about, um, you know, what are the barriers? That families experience of why they, they may not be calling, um, to be really aware around our systemic issues. That we have, that it's our responsibility to improve that, not to put that on our community to somehow reform. To, um, structures that it can be very harmful, um, maybe look at what, what do we need to do as a district? So that, um, that we have better partnerships, better trust, better, uh, relationship. Um, and then in terms of community partnerships and creating a community-based, community is the key word. It shouldn't be us leading. We should really be sharing power and opening up partnerships that. And, and especially because there's not an, we don't have the, the time, the power, the, all the, all the, we can't do it well by ourselves. We ought to be able to do this type of work with other community partners who bring additional expertise, additional cultural wealth. To the table that we don't have. And when I say we, I just, I, you know, in terms of like, you know, we just, we don't, we don't have it all. Collectively, we're more powerful. Collectively, we do it better. And so, um, I, maybe that's an opportunity to partner so that a partner eight organization can provide stipends. Can provide, um, uh, you know, um, something that's worth people's time. Because asking our communities, especially communities of color, again and again, and taking and taking, just isn't, you know. And even our students who are engaged in these programs, what are their, you know, are there stipends? Are there benefits for them as well? So those are just some additional thoughts, just having worked with a lot of other community-based organizations, even right now, I'm part of parent groups and things. And students, students and families get stipends. They get acknowledged for their leadership.
Bellevue has, um, that's a great point. Bellevue's program, uh, CEBs, um, that are run through their district. Their person, um, their stay-in-school coordinator, their truancy person, the, the me in Bellevue. He just provides the board with, um, the students, um, the paperwork, so to speak. So he does the inviting of the students and the family. He sets it up. He arranges for interpreters. Um, they provide, um, they usually provide like, um. Notes for the board members or the community engagement board members. And it's the, the, the community board that works with the family. And then they provide him with a list of things that the district needs to follow up on. So like you said, it's, the, it's community is leading it. Um, but there has to be some training and some guidelines set up. And there's, you know, FERPA and all these other things we have to consider. So, um. But that is, um, kind of the model that we've, um, been trained on. So it, it is, um, very community-centered and not school district-centered.
I'm, I'm actually attending a Best Starts for Kids Open House tomorrow workshop called Youth Transitioning to Adulthood. Putting the supports in place for kids to finish high school and all of that. Um, so that's a big funding source that we could build a community-based, um, support. System through. So I'll come back to you with that information, Kathy. Yeah, thank you.
And Kathy, also the Supporting Partnerships in Education, the formerly the Somali Education Board. There's a network of parents and people that work as well, that are connected with other community organizations that, um, is happening. It's going on this year. So there's, um, parent leaders out there as well that, um, are very passionate and are working on projects and things like that. And then, um, through their more, more recent, several of us were at a, um, community forum. Um, to, um, to eradicate homelessness. And there were some amazing community partners that were there, um, the Tukwila Children's Foundation. There was also, I mean, I, it helped me out because I know there were other folks there too. Um, that was Still Waters was there, um, there, you know, there was multiple organizations that kind of recognized, you know. Finding ways to support our, our youth and our families in the area. So I think maybe kind of tapping into those, that cultural wealth is, is, so very important work. Thank you for what you do, hoping that it, that more community will be part. All right, anything else? Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
All right, action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve human resource staffing report.
So moved.
Discussion.
It's just really exciting to be getting a communications director.
All in favor? All right, motion passes.
Do we know when that might be happening? That she will be coming on board?
We don't yet. She has to coordinate her separation from another district.
Make it a motion to approve purchase of kindergarten iPod minis.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just a couple of, um, questions. So I'm curious as to, so this was on the, um, on the table. To, um, get funded in, uh, next year. And I guess my question is, are, do we have the right, um, number of years for, um. You know, replacing these. I don't know what is it, are we, what kind of cycle are we on for replacing these? Is this a five-year cycle or?
Yeah, depending on the, the, the actual device, it's either a four or five year. The thing we cannot predict is when, um, some of our online partners upgrade their, um, systems folders. Or their portals. And that is a really hard thing to gauge. Um, and so we thought that the iPads would last another, you know, ten, twelve months. And unfortunately, some of our online partners upgraded their websites to a point where, um, we can't upgrade the iPads to meet that. So it's a, I would say between four and five years is kind of, is the zone in terms of when, um, a device becomes unusable. For our students and our staff.
And are we switching? So I was looking at the old, um, technology, um, for the. What's it called? How we're spending the tech levy money. And originally, the concept, the concept was, um, that the first graders would have iPads. That the first graders would have iPads. So I gather we've, we've switched, so now the first graders are, are using Chromebooks, is that correct?
That is correct. One with Chromebooks, yes.
Okay, so it's just the kindergartners with, with the iPads, um.
And special services as well.
Okay. Yeah, I will be interested, this is just for, for the future, I will be interested since this is coming out of S R two dollars. I will be interested in seeing, you know, as we go through here, you know, what, um. The, um, specifically. I mean, I see in the question here outlined in general, um. What it's being used for, but a kind of an itemized list of what it's being used for, so we can keep track of. Um, what is being used for as we go forward? I mean, this, this sounds like a decent, uh, use of it, uh, to kind of cover. Yeah, a kind of unexpected expense, so. Um, okay, that's it, thanks.
Mr. Baker, related to, uh, communicating, you know, what's being done with levy money? And I know that in previous meetings, we've heard before from community interest in, and being communicated. That this is how, you know, this is your money at work, this is what we've done, this is what is happening. Um, we get updates as a board, the rest of the community doesn't necessarily get the updates. And so I was just wondering that maybe, um, as a district or with the, um, tech. The tech group, has there been discussions about how to communicate out to our community members? What we're doing, uh, what improvements have happened, that type of thing?
There is a community farm, um, happening, the, I think it's, I don't have the date in front of me, but it's, I believe it's next. It, it, it's very soon, the first community farm or the family night that, that Dr. Hernan discussed. The four-year tech plan will be, um, unveiled to the community at that point in time. Um, and at that point, um, we'll share the updates of what have been, you know, what have been provided to staff and the students in different areas. Of the, of the tech levy. But getting to a point where we do share, um, annually with, with our stakeholders. On what this money is being spent on and the advantages and the benefits that it has to students, staff and our community. It's definitely something that we're working on and headed towards, for sure. Because they really should know what their money is being spent on. And again, the benefits, um, of, of what the students and the staff are, um, are, are getting, basically. From the taxes that they voted for, for sure.
Yeah, and I can see too, that that also promotes further support, right? Like the next time we ask or something, so folks know what's happening in their communities, they feel like they're involved, right? That they have an idea, so I, I like that idea. And how, what are the methods of communicate, like if it's annually, how does it typically get communicated? What do you, what is the group putting together? Maybe just a couple of ideas?
Um, so currently, I've been going into, um, classrooms at Foster High School. I've done nine to 10 presentations at, at secondary schools. I'm headed down to the elementaries next to talk to students and get their perspective in terms of how the money's being spent. At the community farm, we'll explain to the parents in the community how the money's being spent. And then, um, I'm always doing a survey after that to find out if there's something more, um, that we have to add or take away. And so when we get all that feedback, um, we'll adjust the four-year plan to reflect the feedback that we've received. And, uh, we'll move forward in that manner. The other piece is, um, kind of a state of the levy, um, once, you know, annually, once a year, I think would be a good place to go. We haven't gone there yet. I'm thinking that that would be, um, a solid place to stand, because we really have spent the community's money. I think very, very, in a, in a very, um. A thoughtful way, um, for, for students and staff, and they need to know about that. And so we're definitely, um, going to communicate that via either website or via, um, some type of other communication. But, um, uh, actually, a community member made that suggestion, and I think it's, it's extremely valid that we do that, we communicate that.
Well, and I think too, with our new communications person, we can put little tidbits out continually that keep people informed.
I agree. What several districts do is they do an annual mailer that goes out to all households. Because all households vote, or they have that opportunity to vote, not just our families. So the annual mailers in, uh, different languages is something that we'll be looking into for sure.
Do we have some giant, uh, electronics graveyard someplace in the district? Or what's happening to all the ones that have been retired from service?
So, um, there's a, there's a very, there's a very specific process that has been developed by OSPI. Um, to deal with, um, items that have been, um, reached their end of life. Um, what we did last, uh, in the summer is we had a surplus sale. And anyone that wanted to purchase a program that, or, excuse me, a Chromebook that was outdated. Or other technology items, they were available for sale. If those items were not sold, then there was a company that came and recycled those for us. And then, um, they were, you know, they were not part of our property anymore. Um, we do have a lot of stuff right now that we're looking to unload, so to speak. And so we may be having another surplus sale very soon. Um, and so we'll sell it to the public at a very reduced cost. And, um, what's left gets, um, processed and recycled.
I'm really surprised we can sell it when it was community money, because we can't sell the books that get recycled and all of that. But, um. Okay.
You, you basically have a, uh. Process of devaluation of assets, and then that's true of anything, not just technical pieces. So any furniture that we have also, it either needs to be sold, recycled or thrown away.
Do students have, like, are, I guess I, I just say, well, first dibs, right? Like, how, does it get communicated out to student groups or like, um, maybe higher priority populations in our community?
Um, the law requires that we post it, um, in, um, on like the Seattle Times website, or the Seattle Times or local. Um, news organizations. And so it's very specific in terms of timelines and who we share this information with, because it is public dollars. But in the past, when we had our last sale, we definitely communicated with our families and our students in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Yes, just one other thing I wanted to, um, get in was that is, um. I assume that, so this is coming from data or the technology department. I assume this request is, um, supported by the teaching and learning department. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, Mr. Howard's delays for being on here are pretty significant, so if he unmutes, it's like a minute delays, but yes, it would be.
Because I guess just in general, I, the philosophy on, on technology, I like to have teaching and learning driving the technology. As opposed to technology driving teaching and learning. And so I always like it when requests for technology come, I always like to see that teaching and learning is, is fully in support and is driving the. Um, that side of it, so that's just for, um, uh, general philosophy, so that's it, thanks.
A few quick questions, um, one probably for, actually Ms. Birdsong. Um, uh, I think this is a great use of S R two funds. Um, it aligns with a lot of our other, you know, our goals and, and, and accessibility and all those things. But because you have been having some conversations already, um, out in the community with folks. I'm just curious if this seems to be in line with something that folks would feel like is a good use of those S R dollars?
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. So I have spoken to different parent groups and the different schools. I have the middle school and then one PTA group, um, left to speak with. Um, I'm also going to be speaking at the family, uh, engagement event that's coming up on the 20th, I believe. Um, but with the conversations that I did have, technology and having accessibility was one of, um, the concerns. From students, staff, um, and parents.
Thanks so much. I definitely assumed that was probably true, but I didn't want to just assume. Um, so thanks, thanks for, for adding that input. And then one other thing, um, back to Mr. Baker. Um, I, you mentioned that you were going to share or present the tech levy information at the January 20th family, uh, night. Um, I was curious, is that a kind of a part of your process for gathering more information to bring it back to us? Um, because we haven't yet approved that, uh, plan, is that correct?
Yeah, my idea is to take all the feedback that I've received from students, staff and, and the community and families. And adjust the plan based on what, what the information I've been provided. And then redo the plan and then share it back with the board for approval.
Family night is a, is a part of that feedback.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Okay, wonderful, thanks. And then my last kind of, um, question slash ask. Um, is, because I know communication is, has been a challenge for us and will hopefully continue to get better as we. Uh, onboard this new communications director, but I'm curious, because this is involving, um, money that is not. You know, money that is a community, if we could get potentially even a, a somewhat detailed communication plan. Like when things will be communicated and what will be communicated and to whom. Um, that includes everyone from taxpayers to families, um, and so on. Um, I just think that would be really useful so that folks know when they can expect information around funding. And when their money's going to be spent.
Yes, and I would agree with Dr. Hernan and his assessment that we should do a mailer and some, of some sort, uh, to our constituents. So they do know the benefits of the tax dollars that they've been contributing to the technology. Is, is, if I'm, uh, understanding that question, and I want to make sure I'm clarifying that. Do you, are you talking about included with the submission of the four-year tech plan of communication strategy? About getting that information out?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll make sure there's a communication strategy accompanying the four-year tech plan as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the updates, Mr. Baker. All right, so there's been a motion, uh, it's been second. All those in favor of approval of purchase of new kindergarten iPod minis, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, there we are. Well, what a productive meeting, lots of, lots of, um, good work happening, uh, much more to go. Uh, thanks, everybody. Uh, go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, thank you and welcome, Mr. Fia Pito to the board. Thank you, guests. Thank you, board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. See you soon. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cor.
Good night.